Welcome to East County Magazine's forum for the La Mesa City Council candidates. I'm Miriam Raftery, editor at East County Magazine, and I'll be moderating tonight's event. John Sepulveda, our producer, will be our co-host and running things, keeping everything running smoothly, and also being our timekeeper tonight. There are six candidates running in this race. Three of them will be participating tonight. Councilman Colin Parent, as well as challengers Jack Shu and Alan Durden. Mark Papunfus, who was scheduled to be here tonight, had to cancel because of a family emergency, but he's promised to do a Zoom interview with us soon. Councilmember Christine Aliso and Laura Lothian were unavailable tonight, but they have also or are doing Zoom interviews with us. And so we'll be posting all of those within the next couple of days on our site at eastcountymagazine.org, along with, of course, the video of this forum. So I would like to thank all of our candidates for being here, and also thank the Facebook Journalism Project and KNSJ Radio for supporting our series of virtual candidate forums during the COVID-19 pandemic. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement, followed by questions, and then a one-minute closing statement. We'll be allowing answers of up to two minutes on most of the questions and a one-minute maximum on a few rapid-fire response topics at the end. And we'll be, we want to get in as many of the questions that our readers and listeners sent in as we possibly can. So let's start with opening statements. I'd like each of you to please share your most important qualifications, what accomplishments you're most proud of, and what your goals are if you're elected or re-elected, and, you know, what you may hope to change. Colin, as the incumbent in the race, let's start with you, and then we'll move on to the challengers.
Sure, and thank you very much, Miriam, for the invitation. And hello, everyone in La Mesa. This is a, I'm calling in from my campaign headquarters, which also is where I live. I was first elected to the city council in 2016, and I was the first new Democrat elected to the city council in over 20 years. I grew up in East County. I attended Valhalla High School, followed by UC San Diego for undergraduate and NYU for law school. In my day job, I run a nonprofit, and we advocate for safe streets for our schools and also for affordable housing. So in the last four years that I've served on council, I've been very hard at work for you in La Mesa. I've done, helped get our city to adopt a climate action plan, the first and perhaps now the only enforceable climate action plan in East County. I've also led on making it easier for homeowners to be able to invest in their own properties with granny flats, for those who want to do that, and also simultaneously make a contribution to addressing our affordable housing challenges. And then also, I've led the fight to keep La Mesa's farmers market in the village, which is just an enormous attraction for businesses and for families and something I'm quite proud of. You know, I'm really interested in keeping on the city council to keep, keep moving in the same direction, to keep working hard for my constituents. And, you know, I'm proud to be a Democrat, and I'm endorsed by the San Diego County Democratic Party. But these elections, these local elections, they're nonpartisan, and I'm very proud of my record working for, to help economic development in La Mesa. That's why I'm also endorsed by the San Diego, the East County Regional Chamber of Commerce, and am very interested in committed to making sure that we have a thriving business community here in La Mesa, so that we can keep on attracting places that are going to employ people, that are going to be attractive places to go and do, and do fun things. And I'm really excited to be able to talk about my record and talk about how we can keep La Mesa moving in, in, in the right direction. So thank you very much, and I appreciate, again, the opportunity to be here.
Very good. Jack, we'll hear from you now. I'm being zoom bombed by my cat up here.
Thank you, Miriam, and thank you for having this forum. It's great to be with you and the other candidates and to speak to lots of voters, I hope, in La Mesa. I've been in La Mesa, living in La Mesa for over 34 years, raised three children. My wife and I have raised three wonderful children, all attending local schools. Because of the events that occurred on May 30th and watching the city struggle, the city council struggle, that made me think that I need to do more for my community. I've been a longtime advocate for many things, from dealing with the environment to police reform, to helping the homeless, but I felt the city council needed more help. So I needed to change my position from an advocate to a participant to help set city policy and to help the city do better. I've been in all kinds of positions in government. I've been a parks superintendent for 30, almost 30 years, doing community involvement work. 22 years as a peace officer, teaching community policing, and a long-time president, actually 25 years as president of the Cleveland National Forest Foundation, which has really helped deal with regional planning issues, help us deal with greenhouse gas emissions, climate action plans, and many other things. I've been endorsed by not only the County Democratic Club, but also by the unions. I'm someone who really believes in helping workers. I said in my vision statement that I really want a vibrant La Mesa from one entity, city to the other, and that we don't leave anyone behind. So I want our city to prosper and really set a high bar for city services and for a law enforcement agency. We just, you know, the law enforcement oversight task force is going to be presenting a ordinance to the city council later this month, and that's going to be a cutting-edge proposal. I had, I was involved with that for over a year and a half. It's really going to be the best kind of oversight committee we could have. That's one step towards making our police department more, more trusted by the community and really giving it the strength it needs. But thank you very much, Miriam, and I'll stop there, and we'll get to rest later.
Okay, and next, we're going to hear from Alan Durden. And I should mention, by the way, there are two seats open. So folks, you get to vote for two people on, on the ballot. Alan, you're next.
Thank you for having me, Miriam, I appreciate it. Forty-five years ago, my family moved to La Mesa. People signed a petition to get my family to move. We didn't move, we decided to stay. We love La Mesa. My brother Kevin was killed on the streets of La Mesa, right across the street from La Mesa Dell Elementary School, by a 16-year-old. We could have left, but we stayed because La Mesa's our home. Recently, my wife and I were profiled by people taking our pictures, writing down our license plate while driving home from the Von Shopping Center. This is my home, I love La Mesa. Any of these issues could have validated my family to leave La Mesa, but we decided to stay because this is my home. I grew up in La Mesa, my friends are here, I raised my family here. All I know that La Mesa is better together. Now, I don't have any endorsements. I'm a regular guy concerned about the community. I have no hidden agendas, other than to keeping La Mesa safe, keeping the business community thriving, and making sure we take care of our families, our kids that need a place to gather, grow, and to have good learning facilities and a vibrant library and a community center to be proud of. And that's why I joined the race to run for the council.
Wow, it's a powerful story, Alan. Thank you for, for, for sharing that, that history and, and your vision. Thanks to all of you for sharing that information. Our next question, La Mesa, as all of you, as most of you have alluded to, has been the target of protests over police action and racial justice issues. And there was the riot that did so much damage in late May. What do each of you believe should be done to address the concerns over racial justice and police actions in an increasingly diverse population, while also making sure police are able to protect public safety and avoid a repeat of the riot and looting? And we'll, we'll rotate who goes first, Jack. We'll hear from you first on this one.
Thank you. I want to remind folks of some history. Five years ago, the grand jury in San Diego recommended that the city of La Mesa, with a few other cities, form oversight boards or review boards. The police chief decided he didn't need one and said he, they weren't going to form one. The city council did not do it. We lacked leadership at that time, because had we had one, perhaps the police department could have started some reform. This particular officer that had the incident at the trolley station was known by other people of color as someone who did racial profiling and was abusive to people of color. We could have been involved, the police department could have been involved with that particular officer to intercede and perhaps prevent this whole thing. This is a lack of leadership from our own city elected officials. And I want to change that, we have to ask the right questions. The city of La Mesa Police Department has data to show that they arrest black people at a rate three times higher than the population of blacks in La Mesa. We had to find that information out through a Freedom of Information Act. We have the data, the city council didn't ask for that kind of analysis. We're going to have to ask that of the future police chief when we do those interviews. Thank you.
Alan, you're next.
You know, the police play a huge part in what we do. And as a community of 60,000 people, SafeWise, which is a pioneer in unbiased home security reviews, conducted a survey in La Mesa surrounding public safety. In it, it said La Mesa was ranked 66th, the 66th safest city in California. Our violent crime rate is 2.6 per 1,000 residents, and our property crime rate was 17.4 amongst 1,000 people. SafeWise found that 16% of Californians have experienced violent crime in the past 38 months. Okay, you know, having said that, the police are not doing that bad of a job. The police play a huge role in these statistics. So I'm not advocating the defunding of the police department. What I am advocating for is ensure that they continue to keep these statistics low, but doing it within the confines of the law. The ends do not always justify the means. Okay, it's wonderful that they're keeping the statistics low, and La Mesa's a safe place to live and work. But we need more police officers that understand the community, walking the streets of downtown La Mesa, shaking hands with the business owner, understanding who is on the streets of La Mesa. If they see a homeless person, they don't have to resort to violence or tase or even shoot somebody. They could say, hey, Bob, we understand Bob acts up sometimes. Let's have a talk with him and, and know what's going on in our community. You know, I, I just think that, that the funding is kind of, is, is out of line with what we need. La Mesa's a great place to live, there are a few bad apples. And I posted, when this happened, with Officer Dugan, this is not La Mesa. This is not the character of the people that live in La Mesa. We need to make decisions, make them quick, get rid of these officers that make the mistakes, and then hire officers that live in our community. I think if officers live in our community, within a year of them working in La Mesa, they're apt to not start the violence, living in the same community where they may have some feedback or some throwback with those community members.
Okay, thank you very much. Colin, let's hear from you.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, public safety is one of the core responsibilities for local government, and it's something that I take very seriously. And if we're going to keep, continue to keep our city safe, we're going to have to have a, we're going to have to have a police force and a fire department that we pay well, so we can attract the best people. But we also need to make sure that we're requiring accountability for people who serve, serve the public in that capacity. So I'm very proud of our efforts in the council to get started for a police oversight body. We voted on that at the end of last year. We're moving forward with that, that will happen. We're expecting, actually, on Tuesday, the first report about that, and hopefully, we're going to have an affirmative vote to move that forward to create some real mechanisms for accountability in our city. That being said, I don't think that's the end of the story. I don't think one vote is just going to solve this, this issue. It's a very persistent issue, it's not limited to La Mesa. It's a, it's a, it's a big national conversation that we're having, and I'm open, and I'm, you know, in, committed to having it. One of the other things that we have before us that we're, that we all need to pay attention to, and I want to encourage all the people watching now to continue to pay attention to, is that we're going to be hiring a new chief. Our chief retired last week, and we're going to have a national search for their replacement. We're going to also have opportunities for the community to engage in that process, to tell the city council, to our city manager, who's responsible for making that hiring decision, what sort of characteristics we're looking for in a new leadership for the department. I think that's going to be really important, but again, that's not the end of the story either. We're going to have, this is going to have to be a continuing dialogue, a continuing effort to make sure that our police force is, you know, representative of the community, treats people fairly inequitably, so that, so that, yes, while we are a relatively safe community, we need to be, we need to continue to be safe, and we need to be safe equally to everyone. Everyone needs to feel safe in La Mesa. And we haven't always lived up to that, and I think that's, I think that's true, and we need to, and we need to address that. I don't think anyone in La Mesa thinks that the rioting is okay. Absolutely not, totally not okay, I think. But I also think that the broad majority of La Mesa really acknowledge what the peaceful protesters were talking about, and they do want to see some change. And so I think we can, I think these are totally compatible ideas, that we, that we think protesting is good and valuable, and we think that riots are bad. These are, these are, I think, these are my values, and I think they're the values of La Mesa. And I think we need to understand that and think about that as we move forward.
And Colin, your time is up, thanks so much.
Very good. Let's move on to housing, another big issue. The housing shortage and homelessness are key problems across our region. What steps do you support to address homelessness in La Mesa? And also, how would you balance the state requirements for more housing, especially affordable homes, versus the concerns of some about retaining character of communities and assuring adequate parking? We had a lot of questions about the parking issue, by the way, from the public, so I'm kind of putting, piling some of these together. And Alan, it's your turn to go first.
Wonderful, okay. But if we're going to maintain a thriving city, we need to address the housing issue. But at the same time, I don't want overcrowding in La Mesa. For example, in areas where there's available commercial land that's underutilized, it would make sense to build additional housing, as long as our current infrastructure can hammer it. I recently had conversations with some La Mesa citizens who are very concerned about the overcrowding situation. I recently heard about some of the buildings that are going up, some of the parking lots that will be diminished with the building. Is there a contingency plan for food-flowing traffic? I haven't seen one. In and out of our neighborhood, I haven't seen one. What about the freeway surrounding La Mesa? Affordable housing is important, but overbuilding La Mesa for any reason could make La Mesa less desirable and less safe, and it could be a hazard to our local businesses and village areas. So I, I believe in housing, but we have to do it responsibly. Just building because we're building, I, I just don't think that's responsible. And I think I need to get involved, and I want to get involved, so I can help make good decisions on those particular housing decisions. Thank you, Miriam.
Thank you. Colin, let's hear from you.
Yeah, I mean, housing is one of the most motivating factors for me to be involved in, in public service. So a little bit of background, people don't know. In 2011, I was appointed by Governor Brown to work at the Department of Housing in Sacramento, and served in his administration for a few years, working on affordable housing policy. Spent a couple of years after that, working at the San Diego Housing Commission, which is the public housing authority for the city of San Diego, the largest public housing authority in the San Diego region. So this is something that I care, care a great deal about. That's why I worked with the mayor to establish our homelessness task force, which just completed its report to the council very recently. And that's also why I've authored a number of policies to allow for more homes to be built here in La Mesa. The, the reality is, folks, is that, you know, we have a, and you said it, you said it even in the question, Miriam, is that we have a housing shortage. And the only way, we can't address the housing shortage unless we have more homes. And so we really have to think, think about, think about that and figure out ways to be able to do that, that, that creates some more affordability and to create more opportunities for people to live in La Mesa. I think the focus on that really needs to be the kinds of developments that are near transit, that are, that are near transportation choices, that will allow for more people to live in La Mesa without having to ride a car, without having to rely on a car all the time. Maybe, probably, most people are still going to have cars, but households don't all have to have three cars if, if they can be near the trolley or be, be near a good polybus. And that's the kind of development that I think we really need to be focused on. And that has some really great synergy with our climate action plan, too. So one of the, one of the requirements of our climate action plan is to ensure that we have people living near transit, so they don't have to drive as much in order to get to work or to get to other amenities.
Okay, Jack, your turn.
Thank you. First, I want to start out by an overall approach to these issues of both housing and homelessness. First of all, much of the time, I see cities driven to do housing with an economic model, with economic priorities. And I think that's an error. What drives housing design development should be what the community needs, what the people need. That should be the driving force. And with that, that's how we design our communities, that's how we set priorities. And of course, at some point, we will have to deal with the economic issues and make it happen. With regards to developing more housing, we don't have a shortage of expensive homes or even moderate-priced homes in San Diego. To say that we have a housing shortage, we have to qualify that. We have a lack of affordable housing units, and we're going to have to increase the percentage of them as we move on with development. Cities throughout California, throughout San Diego, have failed in that ability. We have the ability to require developers to put in more affordable housing, and we have to do that here in San Diego. Those are the requirements of the RENA numbers, those are the state requirements. With regards to homelessness, I was one of the strongest advocates for developing a homelessness task force in La Mesa, and I'm happy that we have able to get great talented people in, onto that task force. And one of the things they just did was to present a proposal with, with grant funding, we're going to be able to develop a homeless outreach and mobile engagement group. This kind of ties into the issue of police, and maybe we don't need to always send someone with a gun and armament to deal with a homeless person or someone who's having a psychological issue. This has been tried, and we might go to put in the, the word CAHoots, C-A-H-O-O-T-S. There was a news program on, on one of the news stations not too long ago. And if you see that, you're going to see that we have other options than always sending the police or even a pet team. There are other models.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we are well over time. I apologize about that. And just, no, no worries. And just a reminder, if you want to know how much time you have left, we are putting it in the Zoom chat. Miriam, back.
Oh, very good, okay. All right. Next question, and Jack, it'll be your turn to go first on this one. The burning of several banks and the closure of some other businesses has been tragic, but also presents potentially redevelopment opportunities. There's been a lot of ideas floated around on social media, everything from a town square with outdoor dining to housing or mixed-use development, a library, a community center that's centrally located, maybe a permanent home for the farmer's market, or just more parking. I'd like to ask, what is your vision for the future of downtown that might be feasible to attain? And also, very briefly, what ideas do you have for the rest of La Mesa?
Sure. First, I want to talk about a few things that we didn't do well enough to, to make certain promises that we've kind of broken in La Mesa. Let's start with the library. The library, where it is now, is a temporary library, it was meant to be temporarily. We still owe the people of La Mesa, this part of the county, a county library that is one that will, will serve all of our needs. So that's a priority. Let's look at the climate action plan, and, but we are obligated to, to reduce vehicle miles traveled inside the city of La Mesa, and we need to come up with a plan to deal with that. We also want to make sure that we accommodate things like our special events, farmer's market, et cetera. All those things need to be played into a remake of our general plan in La Mesa and bring it up to date. I also want to pay some attention to the rest of La Mesa. La Mesa is nine square miles with other areas that need attention with regards to how we can help invigorate them, businesses, communities. So the same kind of approach, innovative approaches to help those other communities need to be done. One of the ways that doesn't cost anything is if we put into our minds that La Mesa is a great place, that we smile and are friendly, and we provide that kind of environment to all of our customers, whether they live in La Mesa or they're coming to visit. That's the new kind of La Mesa that we need to put out there. It wouldn't cost any money, it just takes leadership at city hall. Thank you.
Very good. Let's see, Alan, you're next.
You know, I agree with Jack on the library. Recently, I was studying for my 65 securities license, and I went into the library. And, you know, I'm not sure what the square footage of it is, but there was 10 people in there, but there was 15 mothers, and there were 15 kids doing mother and me. So there was no privacy. There was no room for the kids and the mothers to read their stories. So the library's got to be expanded. And we have the community center up there where the swimming pool is that you, since I've been to La Mesa, I've been there twice, and we're underutilizing things. We need to utilize those particular buildings for the community. We need a bigger, bigger library. We need to use that community center so we can gather together and we can communicate to, to one another, because better is together. I think having community events like the Oktoberfest, including Juneteenth, including the farmer's market, including gay pride, brings our community together. And those are the things that we need to, to invest in, to make sure that everybody can gather, we can talk. I've got friends that are on both sides of the aisle. But in the end, we can all come together for a beer, because we respect one another. And I think that is the key for the La Mesa community. We, we have to learn how to respect each other. So I think doing those things gives us a sense of pride, a sense of community that we can all be proud of.
Okay, great. Let's move on to talking about the impacts of the pandemic.
Do you want me to answer that question?
Oh, I'm sorry, Colin, yeah, of course. Go ahead.
That's all right. That's all right. Yeah, though, I, I think, I think our village is really one of the really special parts about La Mesa. And, you know, when I, when I, when I ran for the first time four years ago, you know, I knocked on a lot of doors and met a lot of people, you know, where they live. And even people who didn't live near the village would always, they, they would oftentimes offer up that one of the reasons they really liked La Mesa is that we had that as a resource, so they could go out and go out to have a nice, nice dinner, or nice, you know, go out and have a drink with a friend, and they didn't have to go all the way to North Park, and they didn't have to go downtown to enjoy those kinds of amenities. And so I think that's really a, a really significant resource that we have in La Mesa. And it's also just a, a big economic generator, too. People from all over East County and increasingly to South Bay will come to La Mesa Village to go out and have a good time. Obviously, a little, a little more before, before the quarantine, but, but, you know, still, you know, still some, right? And, and I think that's a, a real reflection of, of the investments that we've made in the city in that area. So we did a downtown streetscape that was very disruptive, and a lot of people didn't like it when it was happening. But the impact was that a lot of businesses responded in kind and made investments in that area. They opened up new businesses, they opened up new restaurants, they started, they started creating what is like, what I think is really fairly described as a Renaissance in the village. And we need to be keeping to look at that. That means we need to be looking at other sorts of things that can attract people there. There's been some ideas about doing some sort of pedestrian piazza in the area. I think that's a great idea that deserves a lot of consideration. But I think we also need to be looking at sort of bike and pedestrian connections, too, so you can allow more people to get to the, get to the area without having traffic impacts or parking, or parking impacts, so you can get, you can contribute to that ongoing vibrancy in the village. And so I, I'm really looking forward to continuing to make those a priority if I'm re-elected to serve on the council.
Okay, thank you very much, Colin. Moving on to the budget. I'd like to ask each of you what your budget priorities are, given that the budget obviously has taken a hit in La Mesa and elsewhere because of the COVID-19 pandemic. And included in that, do you have any ideas for increasing revenues for the city? And if there is an additional round of CARES funding, how would you prioritize that? Last time around, businesses got about a million, and renters got about $600,000, but they quickly had a lot more people applying than funding. So let's see, and it is, Colin, it's your turn to go first.
Sure, yeah, so, I mean, the, the challenge with budgets is that there's never enough money for everything that you want to spend on, right? And, and I think the best way to think about budgets is they really should be thought of as a reflection of our values. And so I think with regard to the, to the CARES money, we just had an example of this in our, our last council meeting, where we decided to give substantially more money for business relief than for renter relief. And I think businesses need some help, no doubt about it. And I'm, I'm perfectly happy to, that we're, that we're providing some support for those businesses. But I don't think, I think our values as a city and my values as a council member is not, is to, is that we have to be looking after the people who are the most vulnerable in our community first, and those are people who are at risk of eviction, those are- Those are people who are, you know, potentially going to be homeless if they are not able to, to pay their rent. So I think we need to, we need to, we should have struck a better balance between those two issues. And if we're faced with that question again, that's the same set of values that I'm going to approach to it. With our budget, though, it's, you know, we're going to have some real challenges with this, with this upcoming and ongoing recession. La Mesa is fortunate that we have substantial budgetary reserves, but we also, looking forward, have pretty substantial costs in order to keep things afloat. And so I think we are going to have to continue to look at new revenues. We, we did have a tax, we put a tax on cannabis. I think that was the right move. And I think we're going to have to look at other kinds of revenue generators for the city to make sure that we continue to stay solvent and to make sure that we continue to provide good quality services to our community.
Okay. Jack, let's hear from you. We can't hear you all of a sudden. Jack, unmute yourself. Let's time start over.
Thank you. I forgot forgetting to unmute myself. Budgets are something that are very hard to deal with because there's never enough funding. But we can have priorities and my priorities are the people. People need services. People want services from the city. And we should really look at the broad scope of all the services that the city is providing and how many of them need help. For a long time, police and fire got like cut lunch. They've got what they needed. We need to rethink what's the best way to provide the services that the police department provide, gives, gives our city and see if there's some other ways, efficient ways to provide some of those services. And the program that I mentioned earlier, these teams that will go out and work with different kinds of calls that doesn't require a peace officer, we can do that to save some money. With regards to revenues, for a long time, I've been against any kind of regressive tax, meaning we tax the poor to help something that, that pays for something that helps everybody. We tax the poor more. And that's the kind of tax, sales tax would do and many of the other taxes since we have. I want to reverse that. If people are first, then people who have the means should be paying more. That's the way Teddy Roosevelt did it and many, many other leaders in this country in the past. And that's the kind of system we need if we want to get the revenue we need without hurting the people in our cities. With regards to the CARES funding, that is a good example why progressives need to keep, get the majority at city council. It is important that progressives get elected. Then I need to get elected so I can help the other progressives that hopefully will also be elected, whether it be Colin or one of the other candidates. We cannot afford to continue with the kind of actions that they just took place in which the majority didn't hear the cries of many, many hundreds of applicants that needed renter assistance and we went to businesses. Of course, businesses need assistance as well, but let's weigh out who needs more. Thank you.
Okay. Alan, it's your turn on budget.
Well, actually, you know, and I think there's a balance. You've got to have a balance between the businesses and citizens. And I think I agree with both candidates saying that priority is very difficult. I am a supervisor in a large company and I, I supervise 40 independent owner businesses. And the CARES Act was important to them and it helped them stay alive and stay, stay vibrant. But we need a vibrant community in order to survive. So that balance between the citizens and the community is very, very difficult. I'm not privileged enough to know exactly what the city council has done in the past and who they gave, what to what reason. But I, I understand that the most vulnerable are the people we need to take care of first. However, if we create a vibrant business community, we can have that revenue to take care of everybody in La Mesa. And I think we've all got to recognize that. So taking care of our citizens, absolutely important. Take care of our business, absolutely essential. So having that mix, I'm, I'm going to stay with that. So I can see some of the, the data that made the city council have the decisions that they made. And, and I'm not so clear of what that is. And that's again, one of the reasons that I'm running. I want to be transparent. I want you to know why we made certain decisions. And if you don't know, it's your money. If somebody took my credit card, I want to know what they're spending. And you should know what they're spending their money on. So that balance is important and I think those points are valid.
Okay, very good. Next, we're going to go to John, who has some questions that readers and viewers have sent in. And we're going to do this rapid fire so we can get in as many of them as we can. Let's try to do one minute responses maximum on these. John, are you there?
I am here and thanks to everyone for doing this. One of the things that we've seen some of our younger readers concerned about is the state of racial relations, specifically in Spring Valley, Lemon Grove and La Mesa. Of course, you're only running for office in La Mesa. What are some ways that you can see working with the unincorporated area of Spring Valley to strengthen racial relations and also the incorporated city of Lemon Grove? And Colin, we'll start with you, one minute.
Yeah, I think this is a great question. I think a big part of that is relationships. I mean, we, we're going to need to have relationships. The people on the council should have relationships with other people who are on city councils in our neighboring jurisdictions. It's really important that they also have relationships with the supervisor's office who represents the unincorporated areas of Spring Valley that are nearby. You know, I'm, I'm endorsed by the mayor of Lemon Grove. We have a good relationship. We've worked on some, some projects together and some policy issues together. And I know both of the candidates running for supervisor and I look, look forward to being able to work, work with them there. Neither of them have endorsed my candidacy, but we're the somewhat different worldview, but, but a very, a very strong working relationship. But those things are really important.
Okay.
I apologize for the minute of this up and we're going to go now to, and thank you very much, Colin, by the way, for the answer. Jack, what do you see, what role can the, the city officials play in strengthening the regional racial relationships with Lemon Grove, Spring Valley?
Well, you know, La Mesa can really provide some leadership. Other cities have done it. We can be the leaders in East County to have events that are, whether you call them multicultural events, international events, and make it fun, make it tasty, musical, artful, and bring that together. You know, I've taught cultural diversity for much of my career, for institutions, for organizations. That's one way you could start, but you also have to deal with the hardcore issues, whether it's racial profiling by the police departments or it is some other kind of divide that we have. So we have community events and hardcore community discussions on racial issues in our communities. That's how we can do it and we have to do it soon, not later. We can do it tomorrow and make it positive, fun. And more importantly, we change our community to be more together.
Thank you. Thank you, Jack. And Alan, your response to, how do you see your role in improving the region's racial relationship?
I think both of the candidates had good answers, you know, real quick story. The day after the riots, I, I was standing in front of the Vaughan Shopping Center and a lady came and asked me. She asked me, why are so many minorities moving into La Mesa? And I looked at her and I said, how long have you been a citizen of La Mesa? And she looked at me very proudly and said, I've been a La Mesa resident for 45 years. And she, that's great, that's wonderful. I said, well, I've been a La Mesa resident for, well, she said 25 years. And I said, well, I've been a La Mesa resident for 45 years. So does that mean you moved into my neighborhood? And she stormed away. We have to take this entirely into consideration, people. This is our community. I think it needs to be all inclusive. And we need to invite our friends, whether it be to the east or to the west or to the north or the south, to come and join us in celebrating that. And I, and I agree with Jack, what Jack just said, we got to have some multicultural events. We got to have some fun. We got to bring people together so that people understand there's no controversy here in La Mesa. We are one and we are La Mesa. We're better together.
And then, oh, sorry, Miriam, we have one more. Well, we actually have two more and I, Miriam, I don't, we have about 12 minutes left.
Few more, I think. You had one question about conflicts of interest that several people had asked about.
Yes, we have, Colin, as you can imagine, folks who are watching this on Facebook Live are commenting. A man named Aaron Amerling has suggested several times through his posts, and I'm summarizing what his posts were, that you have conflicts of interest when it comes to things such as real estate and development in La Mesa. This is something that you've heard before. I am also a Valhalla grad and I'm curious how this, how, how as a Norseman, you're going to answer this question.
Well, actually, I wanted to, I wanted to expand on that a little bit and say, some of the other candidates in the race have ties to, to businesses in the village. One that's not here tonight is on, is even on the board for the merchants. So I guess the broader question to everybody would be, how can you disclose any potential conflicts? And under what circumstances you could see yourself needing to recuse from voting to avoid a real or a perceived conflict?
And we can, we can all agree that John, as a, as a Norseman, is not conflicted from asking me this question, right? Okay. No, no, it's, it's, you know, it's a good question. And, you know, fortunately in California, we have very clear rules about when people are obligated to, you know, refrain from voting on, on certain issues. So, so I work for a nonprofit and we have a board of directors who are fiduciaries to the organization. I'm a fiduciary to the organization, too. And so if ever there's a vote about a matter that either any of my board members, either or their companies are involved in, I would be required legally to, to not vote on that. In fact, I actually have, a few, a few years ago, one of our then board members was applying for some boards and commissions. And, and I, and I, you know, refrained from voting on something like that and did something similar. Actually, one of my, one of our staff lives in La Mesa and she applied for something a few years after that and, and didn't vote on those things, too. And so those are the right, those are good rules and they're also ones that I very closely follow. If ever there's any question about any of those things, I always ask the city attorney. Unfortunately, he's, you know, has done this long enough that he's able to provide me useful advice to, to, to withdraw if, if there's any, any situation like that.
Okay. Let's see, I lost track. Jack, I think you're next.
This is an easy one for me. One, I've been retired for 15 years, but also want to point out that as soon as I declared candidacy, I soon after withdrew my position with the Cleveland National Forest Foundation's board, an organization that I started 25 years ago as the president and been president for 25 years because I did not want any appearance of conflict between what I do as a candidate and maybe later as a city councilman with the Cleveland National Forest Foundation because we have taken legal action against Sandag and we're not afraid of taking legal action against other entities that simply abuse the law with regards to climate issues or any other playing issues. I also withdrew my position with the task force on police oversight because I, again, did not want the, any appearance of conflicts with my position on that task force and my candidacy. I believe in integrity. I stand with my strong record of integrity. And that's how I'm going to go forward as a city councilman. I will be very transparent. If there's something that's wrong, I'll call it out. If there's something that's good and right, I'll call it out. But I won't try to hide anything. Thank you.
Okay. Alan?
Very, very easy for me. It was easy for Jack. It's very, very easy for me. I have no other agenda than to make the right decisions for La Mesa. That's it. No hidden agendas, no skeleton, none of that stuff. The only reason I'm running is to make sure that I get a voice in making the right decisions for La Mesa. That's as simple as it gets.
John, do you have another question or two over there?
I do. Colin, if you wouldn't mind just drilling down a little bit more in your answer. You said that if you have a potential conflict, you take to the city attorney. There is a difference between what's legal, though, and what's ethical. And I'm curious if you have any bright lines and, and I'd like to hear from, from Jack and Alan as well. Address this idea that, that there is a difference between what is legal and what is ethical in order to make sure that there is faith in our, our local government.
Sure. And John, as you may, may be aware, the, the rules for refusal in California are that you're to recuse yourself if you have an actual appearance of conflict or, or an appearance of conflict. And so I think those are important things to make sure that people have trust in the integrity of government and, and their elected officials. But it's also true, but let me, let me just clarify. It's also true that like, this is a part-time job and people are supposed, like, there's an expectation that a lot of people are going to work. And so like, you're, you're going to have a set, you have situations all the time where people who are on these part-time boards have some matter that comes before them that has some relationship to their employer, their client, you know, their realtor maybe, and they sold a house to somebody. Those are all very normal things and that's why we have rules to, for people to recuse themselves where there is an actual, where there's an actual conflict to make sure that people can have some faith in the integrity of government. And so, and, and, you know, even if you're a retired person who's no longer serving on the boards, you have an obligation in California to not vote on matters within 500 feet of property where you may have an interest in, if you're a homeowner or, or a renter. So there's, there's, you know, everyone has some, some of these potential things. And so that's why we have a body of law and a set of rules to make sure that people don't vote on matters where they have some, something at stake for their own personal finances.
Okay, very good. Jack or Alan, do either of you have any more to add to that?
I have a quick, quick response to that. There's a, there's conflict of interest and there's some legal parameters around that. But in state government, when I was in state government, there was another term incompatible activity. That's something that just, it doesn't look right. Maybe it's legal, but it doesn't look right for the public to see that there's a relationship between what you're doing and what you're managing or have policy over. At the very least, if I have a conflict of interest, I'm going to reveal that upfront. I'm going to tell people, hey, you know, I'm involved with other things and there might be a conflict, not a conflict of interest, but incompatible activity. And if I can, I'm going to get out of that incompatible activity.
Okay. Alan, anything else to add?
No, it's, it's, it's simple. If I have a conflict of interest, recuse myself. Simple as that.
Okay, very good. Got a question someone emailed in ahead. Alcoa's mayor has sought to direct their police department not to enforce COVID-19 regulations for business closures, wearing masks and social distancing. Do you think enforcing those COVID-19 rules is important in La Mesa? Lost track of who, I think Alan.
Yeah, absolutely, it's important in La Mesa. I have parents that are 83 and 84 years old. Those are the people that we're protecting. I mean, now we're seeing data that young people are starting to get COVID and starting to get sick from COVID. So we need to be extra careful with them. But I, I really don't understand the, the people that don't want to wear masks or, or protect other people. I think it's so important that we look out for each other. Again, La Mesa is not alcohol. We have 16,000 people here in La Mesa. We need to take care of our little city ourselves. And I think if everybody takes care of each other, again, I'm going to keep on saying this because I think it's the most important thing that we can do. We are all better together. So yes, I think we need to obey the COVID laws, just, just as, you know, the, the state mandates it. And I think we need to protect our elderly as well as our children.
Okay. Jack, what are your thoughts on this?
You know, the COVID laws and guidelines, things like wearing masks are meant to help other people. It's not just to protect you, the person wears it, but it's to slow down or stop the spread of the disease, which is terrible. It kills people. It kills young people. It affects children. It has detrimental effects to lots of people and much, much of our population is very vulnerable to this disease. It's serious. I'm a person of science. I'm going to believe in the science and I'm going to believe in public health officials. It's a public hazard and it involves or warrants public response. And if you're a member of the public, we should respond and of course enforce the laws that are given to us by the state.
Okay. Colin, your views?
Yeah, I, I think we're in this weird, dangerous part of American political life where there are certain people who think that we should just not follow the law if we don't like it. And I think that's very dangerous. And I, I really try to avoid speaking ill of elected officials, you know, peers in the region. But I'm, you know, I think very troubled by the mayor of Alcoa's proposal. And, and I'm relieved that his colleagues on the council said no and exercised a little bit of judgment to say that that's not, that's not appropriate. And I, and I, my only reason I'd be open to criticizing this is because it puts not only his constituents in danger, but our constituents in danger here in La Mesa. This COVID-19 is real stuff, guys. And people need to wear masks and people need to, their And people need to wear masks and people need to, there needs to be, there's a reason why we have a rule of law in this country and we need to enforce it. And, you know, that, that is, that is, should not be up for debate. And so, you know, we can be, we don't have to be draconian about all this stuff, but we need to take it seriously. And we can't keep playing these weird kind of politics saying that we're not going to, we're not going to enforce rules that are meant to keep our citizens in our neighbor state.
Okay. John, I think you have a question there about defender groups and can you?
Yes, absolutely. And this will be the last question, Miriam, because it will be at the time. We are seeing a large group of so-called defender groups. They call themselves patriots. And oftentimes we are seeing that, that these, these groups are, are controversial, best spurring racial violence at worst. What is your position, each one of you, about defenders coming in to La Mesa to quote unquote, protect businesses? And how do you, and how do you compare and contrast that with other folks who are coming to protest in La Mesa on behalf of Black Lives Matter or abolish ICE or so on?
I'll go first.
For Alan, go ahead.
You know, and I've talked about this a lot. And if you give me just a little extra time to explain this, the flag is an identity of our sovereign nation. Okay, it's a flag that includes all of us. Okay, now listen to me very carefully. Not the black people, white people, Mexican people, people of all races and all nationalities to listen to. The one thing that people from Defend East County bring to the, to the fight is the flag. We need to make sure that we bring the flag with us because the flag has a new meaning now. It's a representation of all of us, not just some of us. And if we reject that, we will never be one. So here's what I want everybody to do. From now until October, November 3rd, put a flag in front of your, your house. When I walk the streets of La Mesa and I see a flag, I think of a conservative and sometimes a racist. But that's not true because I have some black military people that fly flag. I fly a flag. But the identity for that is you're conservative and you're probably racist. Stop that. We need to fly the flag. When you march, fly the flag. Don't bring other flags. Fly the American flag because you're an American. We're all Americans. And if we don't include ourselves, we will be excluded. So remember that. So please do that for us. And I think that brings our, our city together. We can't start with the country. We can't start with the state. We have to start with La Mesa, the 60,000, 66,000 people we have in La Mesa. And if we do that, we de-weaponize those people who think they're patriots and using the flag for them.
Thank you so much, Alan. Jack, how do you feel about this? We know that, again, the San Diego Union Tribune, Miriam, she saw one of her reporters attacked in La Mesa. And how, how do you feel about these groups coming into La Mesa? And how do you compare and contrast them when they point and they say, well, you got these other groups coming in as well?
And I wanted to mention too, there is also, besides East County defenders and patriots and various outside groups, there is also the La Mesa Civil Defense Group, which was ostensibly formed to protect businesses after the riot. But as John has alluded, there's been a lot of, you know, people under this sort of broad defender label coming in, some of whom have engaged in actual fisticuffs. As he mentioned, one of our reporters was actually assaulted. And, you know, there's been racial taunts and things too. So where do you find, you know, where do you come down on that, Jack?
You know, in times like this in which we are dealing with real questions of who is a patriot? Who is an American? I want to fall back on what we're doing throughout the country, which is the Constitution of the United States. I swore to protect the Constitution and the state constitution for enemies, foreign and domestic. The Constitution doesn't say that you can hate. The Constitution does not mean, say that you could form your own militia on your own. Militia means it has to be government sanctioned. These are vigilante groups. The Constitution does say that you have the freedom of expression, that you can go out and do a protest. That is very American. And I not only participate, but support all people from being able to do that. That's a part of our country and culture and history. So I'm going to protect the Constitution where it comes to people expressing themselves, but I'm not going to support hate that is not protected by the Constitution of the United States and vigilante groups and militia groups that are self-formed. That's not something that the Constitution says you can have. And I think that's how we have to answer these questions. All candidates swear to uphold and protect the Constitution. All of our elected officials do that and all of our peace officers and firemen do that as well. Let's go with that.
Okay. Colin, what's your stand on these defender groups?
Yeah, I mean, listen, I think if people want to support law enforcement, then they should join a neighborhood watch group, not a racist Facebook group. We have perfectly normal sanctioned neighborhood groups that are run by the city of La Mesa that are connected to our police department, where they're just regular people, meet with their neighbors, keep an eye out for each other. That's good. And I've been to those meetings. I've been, they're just regular, honest people who are trying to, trying to look out for, for, for people in their area. But these, these other groups are really scary. And it's not just in, it's not just in La Mesa. It's not just in East County. It's happening all over this country. And, and we got to say no to it. I understand that there's some people who are motivated, not by these dark motivations, but they're just, they're, they're troubled by the riots. They're, they're concerned business owners. I appreciate that. And I, I understand that, that not everyone who's, who's trying to get involved in this kind of stuff is, is coming from a dark place. But they need to, everyone needs to be really vigilant about trying to create these really negative, scary forces. And so we, we got to say no to it. And I think we, one thing that I think we can have some, and you know, the, at the last protest, if you, if you saw, there were some of those folks from that, from that Defend East County group who were out there with, with knives. They were drinking in parking lots, I mean, really scary stuff. We can't, that, that can't be, that's not acceptable. And, and we got to push back on that as a community.
Okay. Thank you, all of you for sharing all of your views. And we're going to move on to closing statements. We'll give each of you a minute to get in any final words that you would like our viewers, readers and listeners. This is going to be broadcast on radio also next week to know. And let's see, Jack, we're going to let you go first.
Thank you, Miriam. You know, I've done a lot of advocacy work in La Mesa and when I helped to advocate for the homeless task force, the law enforcement oversight task force and the wellness task force. Something I learned is that La Mesa has lots of great people with talent, skills and knowledge. That's what I want to tap into, to pursue this vision. We have the skills. We have the resources. We have good people in La Mesa. We need a government that will let the people of La Mesa help us move forward, to tap into that source. I've seen it happen over and over with the task force that we formed when we let the people of La Mesa be part of the government and that we make the government work for the people. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I really want to thank all of you. Running for office is a huge responsibility.
You missed Colin one more time. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Gosh, I'm tired. Sorry about that. Okay, your turn. Let's hear your final closing statements.
Great. Well. Okay. Thank you very much, Miriam. And thank you, Jack and Alan, for doing this with us. And I want to also want to thank everyone who's watching on Facebook or who'll be listening to it later.
Yes.
This has been a, it's been really exciting to be on the council and be able to serve my neighbors, my community. I really do hope I have an opportunity to do that for four more years. You know, I mentioned up at the top, you know, when I was the first, first Democrat elected to the city council, new Democrat elected to the city council for the first time in more than 20 years. I think that's reflecting sort of a new direction where we need to go as a city, new, new sets of values. I've been able to show how we can apply those values through public policy. We adopted our enforceable climate action plan, the first in East County. We fought to keep the farmer's market in the La Mesa Village. And, and we're making it easier for homeowners to be able to invest in their homes, to build granny flats, to create new revenues for their families, to create opportunities for their older family members to live with them or for their younger family members who are coming home from college or who are stuck in college, they're stuck at home because they're not allowed to be in college during these times. So that's, that's what I, that's what I bring to the, to the position. That's what I want to be able to keep doing for my, for my city and my constituents. And I really do want to ask quite humbly for, to my constituents and the voters in La Mesa to give me another four years so I can keep working for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Colin. And Alan, you get to have the final word today.
Final word. Well, I want to thank you.
Colin went first, starting, so. At the end. Last at the end, you had the final word.
Thank you for having me. I want to thank Jack, Colin and John for being on the panel with me. And, and I want to say that as a longtime La Mason, I've represented the city as a student, a businessman and an athlete. I'm running with no hidden agendas other than to keep La Mesa safe. The things that have happened, I've lived in La Mesa. I've had family die in La Mesa. I'm just asking you for the ability for me to help make La Mesa a better city to live without fear of me walking down the streets of La Mesa with people taking my picture or profiling me or calling me names. I mean, it is getting that bad and that's why I'm running. I'm, I want to bring back to La Mesa, to La Mesa from yesteryear. I don't want to be Mayberry, but I don't want to be New York City either. And I think an even balance of that is who La Mason's are. And I represent La Mesa. I'm here. I'm here to stay and I'm asking for your vote on November 3rd. I appreciate everybody. Thank you for listening.
Very good. Well, I want to thank all three of you. Running for office is such a commitment, especially in the times that we're in, the turbulent times, and trying to do it amid a pandemic is even more difficult. Again, I want to thank the Facebook Journalism Grant for Journalism Project Grant for funding this and recognizing the importance of hearing from candidates, seeing the candidates live in a forum, despite the fact that there's a pandemic. Candidates, it's hard for them to get out and go places. We're going to have some more coming up on the 21st, folks. We're going to be having the supervisor forum coming up. And I'm pleased to say that both Joel Anderson and Steve Boss have agreed to participate. We'll have some for the other outlying cities that will be announced soon. And we'll be posting on our site the video of tonight's forum with these La Mesa city council candidates as well as the three others who were not able to be here tonight, but have graciously agreed that they will do individual Zoom interviews. It was just a scheduling issue, not, not, you know, trying to duck or dodge. So with that, I want to just thank all of you again. Thank all of the viewers and readers who sent in such great questions. And good luck to whoever wins.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you very much, everybody.
You're welcome. Good night.
Good luck, everyone.